Everyone to the Pittsburgh City Council meeting. Councilor Donnelly, would you please lead us in the salute to the flag?
To pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, undivided, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, would you please conduct the roll call?
President Kuzmeric.
President.
Councilor Bean.
Present.
Councilor Boishman.
Present.
Councilor Beazall.
Present.
Councilor Clark.
Here.
Councilor Deenatali.
Here.
Councilor Green.
Here.
Councilor Joseph.
Yeah.
Councilor Caddy.
Yeah.
I'm going to take a brief moment and go off script here for a second, so the clerk might kill me in doing so, but I'd like to turn it over to our mayor for a quick presentation. Good evening, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. President, and members of the council and the viewing public and the folks that are here tonight. This is an opportunity for us to thank the clerk and certainly her staff and the poll workers for the exemplary job that they did in this recent election and the early voting that was carried on for a number of weeks leading up to November 8th. And I have a letter that I'd like to read from those poll workers. They felt that strongly about the performance of the clerk's office and the reaction that they received from the all-important citizens of the city of Pittsburgh. And this is addressed to me. Dear Mayor, Deenatali, the poll workers of the state's first early-voting election in Pittsburgh are sending our sincere compliments to City Clerk Anna Farrell and the entire staff of the clerk's office for their organization and management skills in setting up the early-voting polling place in City Hall warehouse. We unanimously believe that Pittsburgh's polling location was without question the best in the state. The location supported easy-access parking, which was convenient for all voters. Having the clerk's office nearby gave workers as well as voters immediate access to the clerk's office to have questions and concerns answered accurately and promptly. For anyone questioning the security of the polling location, this was easily resolved by the co-location of the clerk's office. Two staff members routinely came to collect and completed ballots to bring them over to the clerk's office where they were counted, processed, and secured behind lock and key. The software that was developed by Pittsburgh's IT staff was exceptionally easy and convenient to use. During the first couple of days of early voting, the IT person worked directly with the intake representatives to ensure that we were completely satisfied with the way the database was organized, to ensure that it was foolproof. At every station, the poll workers were pleased with the ease of processing several thousand voters. Frequently hearing voters also comment on their experience as non-stressful and without lines and excessive waiting times. We are requesting that the Pittsburgh City Clerk and the office staff, as well as the IT software developer, be recognized in a special way by the mayor's office for this comprehensive and thorough process for managing the very first early-voting program in Massachusetts and sincerely signed by the undersigned early-voting workers. And there are several here, and there are members of that group here this evening as well. So if we can get a round of applause for that. And the fun doesn't end. I also want to present the clerk's office, Pittsburgh City Clerk's Office, in recognition of providing a well-organized and successful early-voting opportunity to the general public that's given this 15th day of November 2016 and offered by the mayor of the city of Pittsburgh, Stephen Deenatali. Let me also say that it was mentioned in the letter, we want to provide a thank you again with the IT personnel that worked for the city. They helped track the early voters with their database, set up tablets to help the poll technicians better serve the general public. So we can't say enough about them as well, and the clerk is certainly in agreement with that. But again, we are a very grateful city, and we thank you for your efforts. Thank you. Steve, can I get an answer? I think...
And the accolades this evening do not end. I'd like to welcome a familiar face, our recently re-elected State Representative Stephen Hay.
Thank you, Mr. President. I had the honor the week before the election because the city clerk and her staff were too busy getting ready for the election to accept this on behalf of the city of Pittsburgh at the State House. It's Massachusetts Election Modernization Coalition presents the Silver Medal Award to the city of Pittsburgh for providing substantial early-voting opportunities to its citizens. Madam Clerk. And second is hereby be known to all that the Massachusetts House of Representatives offers its sincerest congratulations to Pittsburgh City Clerk's Office in recognition of successfully organizing early-voting opportunities for the general public. The entire membership extends its very best wishes and expresses the hope for future good fortunes and continued success in all endeavors, given this 15th day of November 2016. Signed, Robert A. De Leo, Speaker of the House, offered by State Representative Stephen Hay.
I'll just add, before we return to the agenda where I'm sure the clerk would feel much more comfortable, I'll just add, I was there at 8:00 AM the next day, and the full clerk's staff was there, and they were friendly and already waiting on the public, and they were alert after what was a 16-hour, probably more like 18-hour day.
Twenty.
Twenty. And I think that just speaks to how dedicated of a city clerk's office and city clerk that we have.
Thank you.
Thank you, Anna.
Thank you very much.
That said, public forum. Anyone wishing to speak on any matter on the agenda may do so for not more than two minutes. If you're addressing public hearing petitions, you have an opportunity to speak at that time. Please approach the center table and identify yourself by name and address for the record and the item number on the agenda which you're addressing. Does anyone wish to speak at this time? Mr. Dragney, good evening.
Good evening, Mr. President, and good evening, councilors. Tonight, I'm speaking before you for petition number 274-16. This is in reference to city surplus property. It's become one of the mayor's efforts to work on Old City Hall in the sense of emptying the building of various paperwork, removing that paperwork if it can be tossed away, shredded, or brought over to the West Pittsburgh Waste Water Plant for the current storage. The next step would be auctioning off any property that's left behind. That would be filing cabinets, furnaces, a generator, ballot boxes from previous years, et cetera. And then the idea is, we've already had hazardous waste testers to go through the building to test for different materials that that building may contain, and then we would be doing an abatement of that hazardous material. That is just a proactive approach by the mayor to ensure that the building's safe for the general public. I'm asking for a suspension of the rules. I'm in a rush to auction off the property, the city property surplus, so that we can get the asbestos abaters in right away before the winter hits. So if you have any questions, please entertain them.
Motion for suspension.
Second.
I have a motion and second for suspension of the rules on 274-16. Speaking to the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It is before you.
Motion for suspension of 274-16.
I have a motion and second to approve 274-16. Speaking to the motion, Council Joseph.
Another thing that Torrey didn't mention was that they had already had the Historical Society go through the stuff that's there, and there's nothing of historical significance going into this auction. That's going to come later from the Historical Society.
Council Green.
Do we have a date on when this auction would take place?
Once we have approval from your body, we will instruct the auctioneer to auction off the property. He's already documented all the material, and he has it in his database. It's a matter of pressing the "go" button. So once we get instruction, then I'll have the auctioneer do so. I believe he's going to do a two-to-four-week basis for it to be open up to the public for bidding.
Thank you.
And you'll inform the council when that's set to happen, what that date may be for the opening?
Yes, yep, absolutely.
Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. President. I also want to add that that auctioneer had a very lucrative encounter with some of our DPW equipment that has been laying, I don't know what you'd call it, unused for years in the DPW yard. We've cleaned up most of those, and nearly $20,000 in cash to the general fund as a result of that. But these are, if you've been through the DPW yard several months ago, you'll see what I was talking about. A lot of that junk has now been moved out, and apparently, there's a market for it. There's value in it, and so we're hoping for the same result from City Hall as well. Thank you.
I have a motion and second to approve 274-16. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It is unanimous, the motion carries.
Thank you, councilors.
Returning to the public forum, is there anyone else wishing to speak at this time? Seeing none, there are no objections, we'll now hear a report from the Appointments Committee. Council Clark.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Committee on Appointments met earlier this evening. There was one person on the agenda. This is for the Council on Aging, turned to expire November 1st, 2019. Mr. James B. Craigan, Apple Tree Hill, Pittsburgh. It was a 4-0 unanimous appointment.
Will the committee's report be accepted?
Second.
I have a motion and second to accept the Appointments Committee report. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Congratulations, Mr. Craigan is here this evening. Now hear a report from the Committee on Records. Council Donnelly.
Thank you, Mr. President. We've reviewed the records, and they appear to be in order.
Will the committee's report be accepted?
Second.
I have a motion and second to accept the Committee on Records' report. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It is unanimous. Communications and reports from heads of department. We have one communication this evening from City Treasurer and Tax Collector Calvin Brooks regarding 54 1/2 Hazel Street.
Will the motion file in the City Clerk's office?
Second.
I have a motion and second that the communication be placed on file in the City Clerk's office. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Turning to the agenda. Public Safety Committee oral report. Council Green.
Yes, thank you. We had a very lengthy discussion tonight, public safety. Petitions before us, 15215, AKS Recycling, petition for a Class III dealer's license. That motion was put on hold. Petition 18015, Councilor Michael Kuzmeric, to install a traffic mirror on Pearl Street. That was given leave to withdraw. Petition 24915, David Cordio and Michael Cataldo, to request a crosswalk. That was given leave to withdraw. Petition 05016, Council Paul Boishman, to request a stop sign be put on the corner of Fairmont Place and Fairmont Street for safety reasons. That was given leave to withdraw. Petition 07916, Council Marcus Deenatali and James Alexander, to have a Traffic Bureau assess stop sign or yield sign at the following intersections, Briarwood Drive, Parker Hill Drive, Parker Hill Drive, and Colonial Road. That was placed on hold. Petition 20816, Council Angela Beazall and Council Marcus Deenatali, to install a safety mirror in the crosswalk at the intersections of Townsend Street and John Fitch Highway. That was placed on hold. Petition 22216, Pavlos Ametodias Auto Sales and Import LLC, to petition for a Class II dealer's license at 1033 Main Street. That was granted. Petition 22316, Council Angela Beazall, to install three one-hour parking spaces at the corner of Day and Main Street. That was granted. Petition 25716, Council Mike Kuzmeric and Joel Caddy, to add metered parking spaces on the westerly side of Putnam Street. That was given leave to withdraw. Petition 25816, Council Mike Kuzmeric and Joel Caddy, to add metered parking to the easterly side of Oliver Street. That was also given leave to withdraw.
Will you accept the Public Safety Committee's report?
I have a motion and second to accept the Public Safety Committee report. Speaking to the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It is unanimous. All right. Recessed hearings. We have four from the same petitioner. If there are no objections from the council, we'll here, we'll take the four before us simultaneously, and those are 214, 215, 255, and 25616. I'll read, do I have to read each individual petition? Read each petition and then declare them each resumed. 25416, Mobility LLC, to install back-haul transport equipment on a proposed utility pole in the right-of-way located north of the intersection of John Fitch Highway and Summer Street, as outlined in the enclosed petition. 21516, Mobility LLC, to install back-haul transport equipment on a proposed utility pole in the right-of-way located south of the intersection of Wayland Street and Pierce Avenue, as outlined in the enclosed petition. 25516, Mobility LLC, to attach equipment to existing light pole in the right-of-way west of the intersection of Pearl Street and Myrtle Avenue, as outlined in the enclosed petition. And 25616, Mobility LLC, to attach equipment to existing light pole in the right-of-way west of the intersection of Pearl Street and Myrtle Avenue, south of the property line of 160 Pearl Street, as outlined in the enclosed petition. I declare those four hearings resumed. Good evening, Mr. James, speaking to your petitions.
Yes, good evening. My name is, for the record, my name is James George. I'm the senior permitting manager for Mobility LLC. I'd like to take one minute, one or two minutes to give you a broad overview of the company as well, just to get you, everybody back onto speed. These petitions are a project in which densification for wireless is advancing itself into 5G. We've gone through the 2, 3, 4G process. 5G is more of a densification process, and densification means what you think it means. There is existing coverage in Pittsburgh. Our client, Mobility, is at the moment Sprint. We are doing this on behalf of Sprint, a small cell project, to densify certain high-traffic areas for our network in Pittsburgh. Those areas, you have a very robust city jurisdiction. You have a lot of areas that suck up bandwidth. Couple of those areas are along the major roadways with the big-box stores and the high-density industrial and commercial areas on John Fitch, I'm sorry, John Fitch Highway and Summer Street, as well as the Pearl Street area. The Pearl Street area is more densification to the college areas. Essentially, what we're proposing is an agreement between the parties, the city of Pittsburgh and Mobility, to gain access to the right-of-way space that you own. The right-of-way space, you have a roadway that you maintain. Arguably, the city owns the right-of-way space on both sides. One side is typically for the utility poles with the advancements of the wires and the electricity. The other side is for sidewalks and whatever else. This is a unique proposal in the sense of nobody else has come up with this particular model. Mobility made itself a competitive local exchange carrier in Massachusetts. It is a national campaign in all 50 states, but centered on Massachusetts, this particular CELEC status provides Mobility a status which can, through an agreement, come on to the right-of-way space and gain access to that particular space. It's not a utility in the sense of the word "utility," but it's a competitive local exchange carrier. A local exchange carrier is the N-grids and the Verizons. So we seek the same permission and the same rights to plant a pole and advance transmission of wireless coverage in that same space. So that said, we're looking to plant a pole, a wooden pole or a light pole or whatever is aesthetically workable for the jurisdiction, to a height that's workable to the jurisdiction, and on top of that pole, propagate small cell antenna equipment. The equipment does not require ground space. It requires the same amount of square footage that a normal utility pole does, and then the negotiating delta is the height itself. The purpose of the small cell, as I said, is to target a given area, that is high-density that's sucking bandwidth, out of the existing network. We're doing 70,000 to 80,000 of these throughout the country, so it's a national campaign. There are other carriers doing different things, but similar. We have the opportunity to go on to existing poles. We have an N-grid MLA, master license agreement, and Verizon. We can put our small cells on top of the existing poles, but we prefer to try this public-private partnership in which we own the facility, and we pay down to the landlord the ground space. I have four applications before the body. We have advanced two of them in front of the subcommittee. We've gone back and forth on location and moved some things around. The delta was the height. We originally proposed 75 feet with a three-foot antenna on the top. I'm agreeable to coming down to a more reasonable level of 50 feet, which in my opinion, based on the zoning environment in the area and the existing utilities in the area, the poles that exist, that is about the height that they currently are in that given area. So we've come to an understanding, or a general understanding, for the application of the John Fitch Highway and Summer Street to utilize, now help me here, we've moved it, or there has been a proposal to move it from one side of the street to the, there is a triangular space right outside that credit union that is right-of-way space. The discussion was to move it over there, add a light, which would be appropriate, and do a metal facility at 50 feet. We would be agreeable to that. And on the Pierce Ave, the Wayland Street and Pierce Ave location, which is the second one that we've discussed, that is again in the high-density area, off the Wayland Street and Pierce Ave area. The McDonald's is there, the big-box stores are down there in the plaza. That's a high-density area. That is again in the right-of-way space in the grassy area along that roadway. 50-foot wooden pole, which is the existing condition of the current condition of the area. We then propose two more applications. We need to densify Pittsburgh State College. The dynamic of the topography and the existing coverage areas, it does not satisfy our network. In order to advance to 5DG, this is what we are proposing. Two sites, one on the top of the hill, which is directly outside the main campus area. You go up the top of the hill, you get the main campus area, the housing and the main campus area. We want to, that's the one that we want, well, the original proposal is to utilize an existing pole that sits there for the, it's a national grid pole. We want to co-locate on that pole. In that circumstance, the city has not paid any revenue. You go down the other side of the hill on your way to the ballfield area, we want to plant a 40-foot pole at the bottom of the hill, wooden in nature, and utilize that to propagate the small cell. These two particular locations, according to my radio frequency engineers, would satisfy our coverage need in that area. So those are the proposals that I have. I have spoken to staff. I've spoken to Mr. Barnaville, Trevor Barnaville, who is your IT guy, and also your health bunea, Trevor Bunea. Trevor Bunea, I apologize. It was just an hour ago, okay? And your health guy, your health guy.
Steve Curry.
Steve Curry, thank you very much. I apologize again. We had a, you know what, we had a good conversation. It was, they're late into the game. I understand they just got this stuff a couple of days ago, and I anticipate having further conversations with them. They had been asked for, they asked me to advance them some EME information, some radio frequency emissions information, because there are health concerns for these types of things. I advanced that information into them. We had a good conversation with each other about a couple of different items. Let me brief the body. This particular small cell propagation from each one of these sites, we are federally regulated on how high we can turn this thing up. Let's just call it that way. Each one of these small cells, let's say the FCC has federally regulated 100% of what we can do. They've come to a level of what any given wireless carrier can do on any given site for the health effects of the human beings. These particular locations and these particular antennas come to 5% of that. The way I like to explain that is, they are small cell. If you take a 10-ounce glass of water, and it's completely full at 100%, which is the allowed federal regulation of what I can propagate safely to humans, dump out 95% of it, you're left with the 5. We are at 5% of 100 of safe propagation for human beings, at a level of 35 feet, 45 feet, 55 feet, 60 feet. So if I am federally compliant with my propagation to the human levels, that is an indication of how safe it is for the humans, as well as trying to advance it forward to get approval. Now this is what we can do with each one of these. This is what's going to be conditioned upon the body, and upon these approvals, if I do enjoy the approvals at some point in time, perhaps not tonight. Each particular site is based on a coordinate and a level of height. If I can get some kind of an approval of a coordinate and a level of height, say this coordinate and that level of height, a specific study is done prior to me getting a building permit or approval, without condition, of how that particular site is going to propagate and how. Without me having a specific location and height, at least generally approved, it would be difficult for me to get the site-specific study. But generally speaking, I gave them a template study that was done in Boston, that leveled it off from 30 feet to 60 feet with the same antennas, and it came up to the 5%. Give or take the type of antennas these guys use, there's one or two types that they use. Some power a little bit more, some power a little bit less. You're going to stay at that 5%. Now, another diligence that I have to perform, if I can get a conditional approval on coordinate and height of one, two, three, or four of these at any given time, I need to do an FAA study, and he's here this evening as well. You have a local airport. Anything that goes beyond any kind of height requires both the federal-level FAA study as well as a local level. So without condition, in order to get a building permit and get an unconditioned approval, I need to get my studies from the federal government. My regulatory department does that. That process is about 60 to 90 days. So on my side, I've got some diligence to do. What I would like to try to accomplish tonight, we'll have a lot of Q&amp;A, whatever you need from me, I can answer to the best of my ability, but I'm trying to get, I'm trying to advance these applications to a place where I can spend some hard money that I need to spend without being moved around anymore. If we can generally agree that, A, these are locations that we can work with at a given height, at a given coordinate, then I can advance my diligence, and that's what we're trying to accomplish, that's what I'm trying to accomplish tonight. This is the way it goes in every single jurisdiction and what I'm required to do for my client. My client Sprint requires me to do this type of diligence in order for them to execute their agreement with, or follow through with their master license agreement with us. So there's a lot of work that needs to be done on the diligence side. I am experiencing the same level of process from each jurisdiction in Massachusetts that I'm dealing with. I have no expectation of not being patient with this body, because I know this is going to be a lot of work. This small cell deployment, however somebody's going to do it, either on an existing pole or building their own pole, I feel as if your right-of-way space, after all these generations, is worth something, not just to the utilities, but it's now space that you own, that you can gain some revenue, and the 5G is the way that you're going to do that. And I like this model, because we are able to own the pole and gravitate to the jurisdiction what they own, and work with the jurisdiction instead of working with the N-grids and the existing pole owners. If I am able to own the pole myself, or my company owns the pole, we would be able to respond better than an N-grid to any given problem or a knockdown, and it satisfies my client to a better extent, because they don't have to wait for it. We are basically in front of 90% of the jurisdictions in Massachusetts. We are going basically at the same pace. This is new, and I am advising jurisdictions, I'm watching the trends happening. The ordinances that you have, relative to the small cell and how they deploy and how wireless works with this utility model, is silent in most ordinances. So there's a lot of confusion that I'm trying to work through, not only on the jurisdiction side, but how can I best manage it from my side as well. There are template ordinances that I can provide. A lot of the jurisdictions are looking at managing their own ordinances and seeing the trend coming and enacting addendums, so it can become more clear on how to process this stuff. But this particular, I'm at the place where I'm at. I want to work at each level to try to get these things advanced. I'll work with IT on their questions. I'll work with health to get them a specific report. I just want to get your feedback on what your thoughts are on these four. I just want to get your feedback on what your thoughts are on these four applications. That's my presentation.
Counsel Green.
Um, am I to understand on petition two fourteen and two fifteen that you've gone before the zoning and planning board, and they've semi-agreed to fifty feet?
It wasn't the zoning and planning board, it was the DPW Subcommittee, right?
Right.
Right.
Oh, the Department of Public Works, so you?
Yes.
Okay.
There has been no zoning event. The poll petitions came forward through the city clerk into this body, we had a hearing on the first two, and you put it down into the Subcommittee. I have not advanced anything into zoning and planning.
Counsel Beazel. Oh, Counsel Green, were you finished?
Um, I'm not, I'm not quite done yet. So, that Subcommittee set the fifty-feet regulation on two fourteen, two fifteen, and forty-feet on two fifty-six?
The, the, the two fifty-six has not been advanced into Subcommittee, they were filed after those two, so there have been two filing events, so I have not gone in front of the Subcommittee on those two. Those two are lower because they are in a more residential area, and I can get away with lower, so, no, forty-one feet on those two have not been worked through the DPW body.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Counsel Beazel.
Uh, thank you, Counsel President. Through you to the city solicitor. So, Vinnie, tonight, we're basically, he's asking us if he can use this piece of land to put a pole on, and if we say yes, then he needs to go through all the other channels to get authorization on, from Building Department and everyone else. And I guess what I'm hearing tonight is, he can't even go to those departments because he has no right to be on city property.
Yes, that's correct, and, yes.
Okay. Um, I mean, I, I definitely, when I'm looking at this, and I know this gentleman came before us in the public works, and everything we've seemed to ask him to do so far, he's done, so I have no doubt. I know that some of the other counselors may feel that, well, if we start this, what slippery slope are we going to go down? And I know that there was even a petition out there to, to say, well, we're only going to allow certain number of poles in the city, or this and that. At some point, especially in the college area, all of these things can be a selling point to somebody. You, you don't want to go to a city or community and not have service. And, you know, when you're, when you're looking at whether it's Verizon or Sprint or T-Mobile, it's all about how much coverage that you have. And I, you know, to me personally, I wouldn't want to be the city that people don't want to go to because there's just no coverage, it's very aggravating. So, I mean, my thing is tonight, I will support approving the use of the land, and then it's up to him to move forward with the permitting process, whatever that is. Thank you.
Mr. Solicitor, you informed me that the state is, you know, going through the process of, of trying to, trying to draft some, some language and some guidance, if I understood correctly, on how municipalities deal with this.
The Mass Municipal Lawyers Association has been looking at this issue, and their gentleman actually informed me, I think it was December third, sir?
Yes.
They're expecting to have a substantial meeting on that date in connection with this type of project.
Yes, let me expand on that, Attorney Pusiteri. The, the Mass Municipal Lawyers Association, thank you, sir, the Mass Municipal Lawyers Association, which is an association of municipal lawyers that represent cities and jurisdictions in Massachusetts, we have been in communication with them, and there's, they're going to have a, a meeting, a joint meeting with us, so we can try to work out generally statewide, A, what, what should we do with the current ordinances as they sit, which are, which are weak in this way? And B, what can we do, what can mobility do to, to work more cooperatively, or what issues do you have, what can we resolve with each other? So, that's an important meeting. There's another meeting that's taking place with the state, the state of Massachusetts. Let me, just so you understand, the CELEC designation is issued to mobility by the state. The division of the state, I just had it out, just a moment, please. The CELEC designation is actually from the telecommunications service, the telecommunications service providers group, the Department of Telecommunications and Cable. Now, each state is different. There's some that a PUC, the Public Utilities Board, this particular state issues this certificate through this Department of Telecommunications and Cables and identifies us and gives us the rights as a CELEC, a Competitive Local Exchange Carrier. We're meeting with them this Thursday to say, this is what's happening, we're advancing, you're getting some increase from these lawyers that don't know what is happening, it's so new, so we're trying to work with the state and say, let's, what's, what do you think the best process is? What do you think it is? So, from a political side, we've heard the feedback from the state as well as the Municipal Lawyers Group on the advancements of the volume of the, of the applications that we've sent in. We've responded with cooperation, let's sit in a room and get it together, but we are, we do have this status, and we do, we're working our way through the new, whatever process develops, both from the jurisdiction, or the state, or the Mass Lawyers Group, to best work our way through this.
Thank you. You're welcome. Counsel Boishman.
First of all, I want to say something. I put the petition in not to stop Mobile Light from coming in, or anybody else. I put it in so we, as a city, could redefine how we want our city to look. That was the whole purpose of this petition. I, I read a lot of stuff, and you probably know, and I didn't want to get a cluster of utility poles, whatever you want to call it, small cell poles. All of a sudden, I look at Hottard, Connecticut, they got a lot of problems down there, one of their districts in Hoppin, they got about fifteen poles on an angle, and they're all different, Mobile Light, T-Mobile, Cricket, AT&amp;T, Verizon, et cetera, et cetera. And I didn't think we, as a city, wanted it. And to get back to the DPW meeting, I didn't think we set any rules. I think we had you go to Vinnie, because he said, the city solicitor said, and I'll quote him, "What's our hurry? Let's establish some rules before we head on to this." And I'm all in favor, because when I look up and I see different designs from different cities, how they're approaching it, a lot of them are using the, the resistant poles, and they're using their streetlights, and they're putting the stuff on streetlights and all of that. It wasn't to give Mobile Light a hard time, sir, if you get that, that impression from me, it wasn't to give that. I just didn't want a seventy-five-foot pole sticking out in the ground when I overlook my city and I see on the horizon a pole here, a pole here, a pole there, and a pole there, and it takes the beauty away from your city. That's what, I'm in favor of 5Gs, don't get me wrong. My kids like to play the games too, and they like to talk, just like I like to talk. So, I'm not against that. I'm looking for the beauty of it, to make it apparent that you, because other rich communities can do it, but we come to the poor community, can't do that. We let them come in and do what they want. But if you go to another city, they put the rules on, and that, and that's what I want. I want this rules, how we're going to handle this. That's the only reason why I brought, I put a petition in, Angel, was for that reason, not to give you a hard time, and I sure as heck didn't want a seventy-five-foot pole. I'll be honest with you, I fight that, I don't believe in a seventy-five-foot pole. I would tell you to use the chimney, the, the recent, what is it, chimney you're talking about, Fitchburg State University, put it on there. If you're worried about the volume, put it on there where people can't see it. Don't say it can't be done, because paperwork shows that it can be done. And they put it on buildings, and it shows that, they didn't put a seventy-five-foot pole, they put a little box, and that's all I wanted. So, no offense to you, if I gave you the wrong impression, I wasn't out to give you a hard time, because some counselors say, I'm very tough, and I'm, I'm shooting from the hips, they had, I'm shooting straight, but I'm aiming. So, okay, thank you.
Counsel Joseph.
I'm in favor of what you're trying to do, I'm in favor of business, I'm in favor of the city trying to get money, but I'm also looking to see what body in the city would be responsible for regulation of these poles. I mean, is it, it's probably not a zoning board of appeals, because they're not violating any zoning or ordinances. It's, is it planning? I mean, who, who would write the regulations for these poles? And how can we, do we need to give them a petition to ask them to do a regulation before we go forward? Because, again, I, I, I want to see this stuff happen, but I want to see it happen in a rate and in a way that we want it to happen, not in a way or a rate that the people that want to do it want it to happen. And, and that's, and that's not because we're a poor community, it's because we're a responsible community. So, who is the ultimate body that would be responsible for regulations?
A question for the solicitor?
Sure.
I, I think it's a zoning board, I think that the building commissioner would deny an application for a building permit from the applicant, but then refer the applicant to the zoning board for a variance because the height of the structure would violate the zoning requirements in some of the areas, and perhaps not in all of the areas, and I, I wouldn't profess to know all the different height requirements for our different zones that each one of these poles are located. But I believe that a fifty-foot structure would, would have to get a variance.
How high is a telephone pole?
Thirty to thirty-five feet would be my best guess.
So, I guess, I, I really don't want to see any company come in time after time after time to go to the zoning board of appeals. That's why I'm saying, that's why I think if planning or somebody that is, normally does it, we could do it once and say, your height limit is fifty feet, your amount of poles per hundred yards is ten or five, and the city will not approve anything more or less than that, or, and then do it on us.
So, I'd like to receive that as a question as well. So, we could certainly have a petition filed with this body that would then get referred to the planning board, and that would go through the normal process to creating a new zoning bylaw.
Right.
To streamline this type of thing, to, to say, you know, if it's this type of use, these types of structures are going to be permitted either as of right or through some type of expedited permitting. You certainly could make that type of an ordinance.
Can we do that in conjunction with his petition so that we don't, we don't, I mean, we're in the middle of a hearing where on a time, supposedly on a timeframe, we want, we want it, he wants it, but we want it responsibly. How, how do we make that happen in the timeframe that he's, that we're required to?
Because of the request that you be issuing a permit and a fee on the public property, we could do quite a few things. One of the things that is happening is, you know, some very bright municipal attorneys are going to be looking at this on December third, and quite honestly, I would enjoy having the benefit of that experience and see what those folks come up with as far as their evaluation of mobility would like to do and similarly situated companies. We may find that they will promulgate for us proposed ordinances to address exactly what Counselor, you're, you're suggesting. They may couple that with proposed types of contracts so that mobility will have a similar contract with us, as with all other jurisdictions, which would actually be easier for them to administrate their business as well. So, you know, it is possible that, 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 the fact that the Mass Municipal Lawyers Association is laying in on this should be a great benefit to the city.
So, how do we go forward within the timeframe of a public hearing, and what's in front of us?
If I can answer, could we? In my, can I answer that question?
I was just going to add to that, can we, if, if the council was so interested, could we pass this contingent upon approval from the zoning board while at the same time pursuing a, a mechanism to, to allow the zoning board to, to begin hearing these moving forward?
Uh, I don't think that's advisable, but I think that if I, I understand speaking informally with the petitioner outside, and then he's repeated it here, he's kind of interested to take a, kind of a weather report as to exactly how committed that the, this jurisdiction would be to moving forward. I think he's heard one counselor say no, he's heard two counselors indicate some, so I think that's what he's looking for, and I would rather wait until we receive some input, my personal opinion, not to unnecessarily delay, and I don't think, from my conversation with the applicant, that he's necessarily opposed to having some reasonable period of time to allow Mass Municipal to take a look at it and have your further meeting later this week as well. But I would certainly inquire with him on his timeframe.
We have two meetings in December, December sixth and twentieth, if that helps.
Is that a question to me? Can I respond, or, or a statement?
Counsel, did you have any further follow-up before I turn this to, to the petitioner? Sir?
Very interesting circle of debate. I, I, well, it's okay, because I've heard it before, and I'm trying to do the best, the best foot forward. As I said, I'm patient. To your point of how to move forward, I do not disagree with Attorney Pusiteri. We do have some upcoming events that I think for both sides would be, would be manageable to understand where the state sits and, and all, I don't know how many states, how many cities in the, of this Mass Municipal group, how they all sit with this, okay? I can understand your discomfort level on that, but I do want to make one point. Salem, Massachusetts, we were the first ones in there back in February, March, April, so we, we had a lot of play with them, and that's my hometown. They were confused. We, we came in pretty hard, we wanted new poles, we wanted attachments, we wanted the whole thing, okay? And we, I have a pretty, we have a pretty good relationship with, with them, but what they, they, what they decided to do as a major jurisdiction in Massachusetts, they said, all right, we're slowing you down, right? They didn't deny us, but they put together what they called a, quote, "Process and Guidelines for Access to Right-of-Way slash Pole Attachments for Telecommunications Providers in their, in their Community." It laid out in a, in a seventeen-page document, if you want to attach to an existing pole in our jurisdiction, this is what you got to do. If you want to plant a new pole in my jurisdiction, this is what you got to do. It's more of a checklist, you got to go to, you got to go here first, gathering up every member of the staff. If every member of the staff comes back to my city council body and, and says okay to this, the city council is the body that, that deals with it. It's not the planning board, it's not the zoning board of appeals. The city council maintained control because it is a contractual relationship on their land, they just set up a process where every staff member was to be communicated with and check a box before it got back to them. So, that seemed to work out okay for that particular jurisdiction. I like that idea. From the Planning and Zoning Department, I'm not saying I don't like that idea, I'm saying that there's a reason why we sought and obtained CELEC status. Arguably, we seek the same process, generally speaking, that a, that a, that a Verizon does to come in and say, I need to plant a pole, I need to service that cul-de-sac. I'm not looking for that, I'm looking for the recognition of the status. I'm not a wireless carrier, I am a CELEC, so I have the right to be there, contractually. I'm looking for that same process, not so much, I get kicked into the wireless telecommunications ordinance as I get that, but the first body that I come to is the city council through this poll, poll agreement, and then go down. So, that's, that's sort of the way that I would recommend that, is this, this work, I think this is the way it's going to trend with the, with the Mass Lawyers Group, they simply want a process that I can work with and they can work with, so everybody looks to the same instrument and says, did you follow this? So, this was, this was done by a very smart city solicitor, Christine's very smart, and she put a lot of effort in it, and I'll get, you know, it's online, but I can give, I can give you a copy. That's what I would recommend, or that's what I would say into a microphone, is what I would think would be the best process. And the Mass Lawyers Group has a copy of this, because they're part of it, the state has a part of it, and this may be how it all flushes out of that, is that's the process.
Counsel Joseph.
Well, I'm just, I, I, in listening to what he's saying, I mean, if you look at it, telephone poles and communication, basically, a lot of times, they tell us what they're going to do, and we don't tell them what they're going to do because it's by right that they can do that. And I don't know if this is by right, but it's kind of sounding like it could be by right. So, that's why I'm, if that's, if it takes till December third for the Municipal Lawyers Association to review it and make a determination as to how that moves forward, I'm all for that, to continue it until after that date, and then just get a recommendation from them, because I, I really don't see it as being a planning board thing, I think it's something that by right, they're going to be able to propose, but how do we, how do we regulate it as a city?
Uh, Mr. Solicitor, I believe you had a point to add.
Well, just, they're looking for the same rights, but they're going about it in a different manner. They're putting in a substance. They're putting in a substantially different structure. And I think that's going to require the application for a building permit, but correct me if I'm wrong.
Oh, without question, I have to obtain a building permit, yes. That's, that's once the body says that I can. I seek approval from this body, and perhaps from your planning board if that's the direction it's going to go. So I don't get my permit until all conditions are met. You get your FAA study, you get your EME studies. If you, if you even conditionally approve anything this evening or later, I'm going to say that there's going to be conditions of, before you get your permit and you dig the hole, I need electrical sign-off, I need building permit, I need, I need FAA study, I need EME studies, I need all that stuff. So I'm, I'm, it's just a, it's just checking the box, right? Okay, okay.
Do you have enough people that need to talk, or can I make a motion to continue the hearing?
I have two, two councillors left on the speakers list if you would hold your motion. Councillor Deena Tally.
I, sir, don't want to continue this. We went through the DPW, went through this extensively. This is a market-driven demand, one that this city should not pass up. We are not a poor city, because I live here, I'm not poor. I don't think anyone in this room is poor, so I really take issue with that designation. As you said earlier, sir, this is going to be put through the regulatory wringer because what government is best at doing is stalling things and pretending to know things they don't. So 50 feet, 70 feet, you just went through the list, FAA approval, electrical approval. I mean, I don't even want to know what you guys have to pay to get 7,000 approvals before you even break ground. So I have no problem with this going through city council, I have no problem with this being treated like Verizon. We talk about continuing the hearing until these, these lawyers meet on December 3rd. Well, they meet on December 3rd, how do we have a guarantee that there's going to be something in writing right that day when they're done? There won't be. Because, again, I guess I'm a skeptic because I've been in city government for 12 years now, we drag our feet religiously. Nothing ever goes quickly here. So when I have already hear concerns about regulations and how can we monitor this, there are so many things that we don't even know that these guys have to go through as it is. I never really have a concern about it being done the wrong way, because you just went through it chapter and verse. You got to get a building permit with our blessing, and then you got to go through about 7,000 studies. So I don't want to impede you any more than you have to be, because there are other places I'm sure that would love to do this, and this is a driven project. We have a need because of bandwidth constraints. So I don't want to delay, and I'm not saying anyone here does, I just don't have the same concerns others do. Because given the state we live in, and given the environment we live in, you will be regulated through the wazoo. So, and I'm not going to pretend I know anything about it, because I don't. I'll leave that to the subject matter experts on Beacon Hill. And lastly, like I said, we continue this, I can guarantee you, we're not going to get you a decision before the end of the year. I can guarantee it. Because when these lawyers meet, is there going to be a stenographer there who's going to type everything up, put it into print form, and distribute it to the 365 cities and towns throughout the Commonwealth on December 4th? No. So we went through the process, DPW has reviewed it, you have compromised with the height and with the locations, let's do it. Thank you.
Councillor Green.
I have to say, Mr. George, that I commend you for being a company that obviously follows best management practice, because I understand you're the, you're the first coming to us with mobility on this type of an issue, and we're always, you know, reactive versus proactive. So I commend you for taking the time and opportunity to meet with the bodies that be to get this moving forward. I'm a fan of this, because I don't kid anybody in this room, that you will have to probably jump through bells, whistles, and hoops and everything else to actually get it done. So I would like to see it move forward with a blessing. And if there are options other than utility poles, which has been demonstrated, that those, again, can be conditions that we can put on it. You know what I mean? If it's, if it's at the side of the building, IC Credit Union versus a utility pole in the middle of property, an option. I'm not saying that's what it will be, but I like the fact that mobility has options. It doesn't have to be one choice, there's options that are available. So I'm in support of your, of your hearings and your petitions. Thank you.
Councillor Clark.
Thank you, Mr. President. It was mentioned briefly, and so I want to maybe learn a little bit more on what Fitchburg State has. Where does Fitchburg State in this, where are they in this scenario right now?
That's a good question. One of my action items that was referred to me by Attorney Poussetteri was to communicate directly with Fitchburg State, because I do not want to interfere with what they currently have, and I wanted to get their take on this. I did speak with their IT, with their CIO, I was referred to their CIO. We did have a conversation, he asked me what I was doing, I told him what I was doing. His only concern was they have internal Wi-Fi in their buildings, that's what, that's what they set up. He said, "Will that interfere with my internal Wi-Fi stuff going on?" And I said, "No, 802.11 is a different frequency, it's down here. What I'm doing is up here, they will, they will not interfere with each other, just like I won't interfere with your public safety matters, everybody has their own level that they, that they own." So otherwise, he was in agreement that, yes, the students need their bandwidth, if they're Sprint or Verizon or whatever, it doesn't affect my, my 802.11 Wi-Fi, so he was, he was comfortable with it. The students, it's, okay, so the state colleges themselves do not have a problem with me planting this pole and propagating Sprint into their, into their body, into their, into their, into their campus, say. Did that answer your question?
Charlie, I know that there's more to come, I'm sure.
What else, you know, part of this model, and what is exciting to me, and it's not just Fitchburg State, it's all of the state colleges, I'm in front of North Hampton, Smith College, Amherst College, Northeastern, all of these colleges are the bandwidth sucker outrers. The kids just chase Pokemon all, so my goal, a large percentage of my sights, my play, my, my presentation is, I've got to cover the students, they're, they're taking too much from my network, so let me cover the students. How else would you do it? This is the best way to do it, 5G is coming this way, it's not just me coming forward, it's going to be everybody else. You get close to the ground, the delta negotiation is the height, 30 feet, 40 feet, 50 feet, okay, but you get close to the ground and you beam it in, you light them up. And that is the reason behind us doing it this way. I like the public-private partnership in the sense of, we can, I can table all these, put them in a drawer, and go make my deal with, with N-Star or N-Grid or Verizon and do a co-location, put my same antennas on an asset that you don't own, you don't make a nickel. I could do that. I'm doing it in jurisdictions. There are certain jurisdictions that say, "No new poles, period." Okay. I pull back, I recycle, and I make my deal with National Grid. They've accepted the fact that there's no revenue in it for them, but I still, I still get it done. And so I have, like you said, options. My first option is to peel back and give my money to National Grid. My second option is to go backwards and give my money to a, to a private landowner, plant my same pole, go through the zoning process, and there I go. I would prefer not to be on a building, or a smokestack, or anything like that. I cannot spend that kind of money to a, to a private landlord that, what he may expect. This is a low, a low dollar value scenario. You get paid per pole, I am regulated federally on what I can charge my, my small cell tenant. They, I told you that story before, it was the Wild West with the N-Grids back in the day, federal government got involved and they regulated on small cell. You can only charge them this, which means that's what I can charge them. My company made this model make sense. A wood pole costs X, to dig the hole and plant it costs X. So they, they made it make sense on scale, 70, 80,000 of these things all over the place. They made it make sense. I think this is important as well. Let's say you take a look at every piece of right-of-way that you have, every, every road that you have in your jurisdiction, all right, there's right-of-way space. This agreement is for all of it, generally speaking. And, you know, I put one over here, it's a site lease agreement against the body of the, of the master license, right? We're talking to, you know, we're, we're doing business with mobility and Verizon throughout the country. And in their mind, what is, what is the easiest play for me to come into a jurisdiction? Managing it through the national grids, or does mobility already have a deal, and they got a, they got a poll agreement in place, and alls we have to do is get the approval for that particular thing? The land control is in place? You plant the pole, we'll go in there, and that's the way it's going to go. The co-location scenario, I can, I can, I get that, I understand about the proliferation. But if we do it right, I've done, I've done half new poles, half, half co-locations. I've done, the city owns the streetlight itself, let me go on top of it, forget about planting a pole, I'll give you the same amount of money to go on top of your streetlight that you own. It just depends. In this way, in these four, they were well thought out, they're, I think they're well-placed. We've got industrial zones, and we've got small, lower-to-the-ground, college-based And they're, I think they're well-placed. We've made some mistakes on placing these things, we've put them in cul-de-sacs in front of homes, and I've had to back, I've had to backpedal on that. So as a company, we have made poor choices in certain places that I've had to withdraw and recycle. I feel good about these in the sense that they, I feel as if they are in decent places that are not causing a general outcry about what I'm trying to do. There are, there are negative points, there are positive points. One thing I, one recommendation I could make is, like, like I said, if you conditionally approve, even if you want to say one of them, right? One of them. My regulatory process to get through FAA and NEPA and SHIPO and all that stuff, 60 to 90 days. A motion has been made by others, or in other places. We conditionally approve, what? We conditionally approve that coordinate and that height at that location, 1, 2, 3, or 4, subject to, check, 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 FAA deliver to me, EME deliver to me. I can't, okay, I cannot order my EME study, hard cost, without some kind of a conditional knowledge that you're not going to move me again. What that would require of me is, give me a conditional approval for whatever's in your heart, but give me a coordinate and a height that I can live with so I can advance into hard cost. Then I can come back and say, "Here's your EME, here's this, here's that." Call it a pilot, out of 1 out of 4, or 2 out of 4. At the same time, meet with a, meet with the body of lawyers that I got to meet with, meet with the state, and then come back 60 days or so and say, "Here's, here's your stuff on site number 1 and 2. Let's talk about that, what can you do with that?" And then, and then go on from there. That's one recommendation that I can make.
Councillor Tran.
You mentioned you came in front of about 90 municipalities already?
Me personally?
But I heard that you mentioned you were in front of 90 municipalities already, presenting the same presentation.
I, I think between myself, over the past three or four months, myself and my colleagues, my colleague, yes, yes. We're throughout Massachusetts, New Hampshire, Maine, Vermont, and Rhode Island.
And of those 90 municipalities, how many have you received a blessing from? Sign-off.
We have, we've got a considerable amount of permits in Providence, Rhode Island. I'm going to try to talk about Massachusetts, we're, we're, we're doing one in Chelsea, Mass, but the rest are entwined in this process that I'm, that I'm in the middle of now.
So one, one community has given you the blessing to go forward?
For an attachment, yes.
Okay. And which, which other community is in, has made the most progress? You mentioned that you're working with Salem?
Salem.
Has, has provided you some guidelines since March?
Yes. I, I feel as if Salem has made the most process. Here's another interesting fact as well, we're doing, we're working with, there are 41 jurisdictions in Massachusetts, including Lemonster, I believe, that is, that is a municipal light and power group. They, they own their, they own the right-of-way space, and they, they, they own their own power. They generate their own electric bills to their citizens, right? We're doing, we're trying to get involved with impurity right now, I should win that bid, but that, that is attractive to us because they own the poles, they own the space, and they're looking to either plant poles or do, or do co-locations. Specific to your point, I am frustrated at the sense of, I've been in this for four months now, August I started. I've worked my way through the various processes, and I'm still at the place that I started. In my opinion, not at the place I started, but I have not crossed, I have not broken the glass ceiling of obtaining bulk permits or building things, yet. So you are in a place, Fitchburg is in a place where you can take a shot, and you can give me a conditional approval, and you can watch me work through the process, or we can, I'm patient, we can pull back and wait for further feedback. But I, I'd like to get going on my diligence so I can at least get moving in that way.
So what, what are the reasons why the vast majority of the municipalities are moving so slowly?
The same reason you are, is my answer to that question. I get in front, okay, I, I submit applications, it goes through that process, I sit in front of the body, selectmen council, they kick me down to a committee, everybody meets twice a month, twice a month, twice a month, twice a month, I'm constantly, I met them, I come back up to the body, and I have these type of debates. So in four months, I've done nothing, and it's okay, because this is the way it's all going to work. I do nothing but meet people, gather materials, get feedback, wait two weeks, 30, 30 days, and come back. So that's what I'm doing, that's, that's what I'm doing. And it's unfortunate, because each question of each jurisdiction is, "Who've you done it with? Let me see." I am not in a place that I can do that. In Massachusetts, there are others, in other parts of the country, yes, that we've built, we've built some, got a couple thousand permits in hand.
With all due respect, sir, this is the first time you came in front of this body, and this is the first time that I've communicated with you.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Councillor Beazel.
Thank you. I think for most of people looking at this, it's the unknown. We've had Verizon come before us, we don't ask Verizon how big of a pole is, they could put in a 150-foot pole, we say, "Don't put it on the sidewalk," and they just go put a pole in. But we know Verizon, we know who they are, we've dealt with them in the past. So you have to understand that this isn't about, you know, the frustration isn't, it's the unknown of, of your company, of what you're trying to do. Because with, with other people that come before us like Verizon, we just make sure it's not on the sidewalk and we approve it. We don't question how high it's going to be, how many things they're going to put on it, you know, when they're going to replace it. And I, and I think that's what a lot of this is, it's, it's just the unknown.
I understand, sir, I understand, and I'm, I understand your point.
Councillor Boishman.
I'd rather wait until the report comes back. I'm not like Councillor Deena Tally, come on, man, and do what you have to do, and we'll pick up the marbles, and we'll address them as we proceed. No, I don't want that, because what we don't understand, if we really did our homework and we, and we actually look at the internet and we see where they actually went into, Baltimore, for example, you, they get so mad at you guys that they made you take your poles down and put them where they wanted to, and you pay them more money. You pay them more money to put them up. So you talk about money, I talk about money. You want something, we want something. My argument is, I want it to look nice. If other communities can say, "We want you to revamp our lights and put it on our lights, revamp our lights and put it on our lights," I don't want to see a thousand poles. Maybe Councillor Deena Tally does, but I don't want any more poles. I would like to see them all underground, but we can't do it because of cost. Now Salem, Mass, your hometown, according to what I'm told in Salem, Mass, you haven't gone back to them. There was another proposal from another company which offered more money, and they were going to revamp the streetlights so they could go in. Salem came back to you, not you, your company, and says, "Match them, and we'll go." You haven't got back to them. I'm not making it up, because I called up today and I asked, and they said, "No, you haven't not got back to them." Verizon is doing LoL, they're doing 5Gs and LoL right now. Are they putting antennas on the pole? I asked, they said, "No, they're not putting antennas." They're doing something different, they said. They wouldn't tell me what, the women inhabit, and she says, "I can have a, a guy call you back tomorrow." I said, "Well, my meeting's today, I can't do it." But I did call up last week, and I couldn't get anybody. But I did call up last week and I couldn't get anybody, so it's not like I'm not calling. I want something nice for our city. I don't like telephone poles, I don't like signs, I don't like the cluster on everything. I don't like it. I don't like it. But a vast majority of people, if I don't like it, I'm very hard to please, they don't like it either. And I think I speak for a vast majority. Maybe not Counsel Dean O'Tally, but I know what I like and I know that I wanna make sure that when we get it, Comcast is coming in right after you because they're starting in 217. Verizon's coming in, AT&amp;T's coming in, Cricket's coming in, T-Mobile's coming in and whatever else that we have are coming in. You're not the only one. And then the other thing I read, according to the internet, we have to be very, very careful because there are some companies that wanna come in, stick their pole up and say, we're working for this and that company and they're hoping they will come and put it attached to their pole. We have no guarantee. I think if I read, and I, and I wanna try to remember what I read here, they said in some of these readings that I read, why don't you prove to us that university needs it, that, well, that Kmart area needs it, that Summer Street, yeah, you're coming in, you're saying it to us, but you haven't gotten, you, I'm going by what you, what you're saying and I'm gonna tell you I'm God and I can do miracles. Will you believe me? And you're gonna tell me, prove it. So I'm only going by what I read in here and the internet. What I read about poles and, and the fancy designs they're coming in and different places where they're, they're alternating, they're making it nice and very apparent, period. Like I said, you got pole, here's a 75-foot pole on the side of a regular street pole and the only reason why you don't really notice is because it's behind a tree. I got another one over here. And then my final thing, and this is from your website, it says here, notice, and this is for Summer Street, notice, stay back, radio frequency, energy may exceed exposure limit if you have any questions, contact whoever. This is what you gave me when you gave it to all us, all the councils. So what does that mean?
What that means, Counsel? The, the site-specific EME study goes into that. There is signage that is required for any wireless appurtenance on, on, on the given pole. That sign is actually up close to the antennas and it is an OSHA requirement and an FCC requirement to offer signage like that, yes. That's my answer to that. So that's why we put it in the drawings because we're required by the FCC and OSHA to put it in the drawings. But the EME report site-specific goes into very technical detail about how it's compliant with the federal regulations.
Counsel, uh, Counsel Boshman, you also?
The only thing I want, I'll go on a recommendation of the city solicitor, that's what we pay him for, and what he suggests, I'll back him 100%.
Counsel Joseph.
I, I just, my only thing is I just, my problem isn't with you, it's your industry. And it's, it's not you being here tonight, it's you being, representing an industry that when you, when we open the gates with one for you, what does that mean for the city? And that's why I think we need to regulate a little bit.
I understand.
And that's, that's the only thing, is it's not you, it's not your one, get your one study, it's the, again, like Counsel Boshman says, it's everybody else that's going to be doing it on behalf of Verizon and all of the other ones that wanna do it. So I just wanna see that the city knows what it's getting into before it gets into it. And, and that's just, I, I'm ready to move forward, but I just need to have something that says, we know how we're going to regulate it when, when 50 companies come in here.
I stand down to the regulator, to the, to the recommendation of Attorney Pusitari. I've made my, my comments on, there are, there are sample ordinances out there, there are, there are tech, there are template agreements out there. I think a lot of this, I think half of the response, or a percentage of the responsibility to regulate falls to you.
Absolutely.
Okay. We, we all acknowledge that and there is, there's instruments out there, there is trends out there. And I am, I am working in cooperation with patience, with, with all bodies and I, that's, that's my point, in cooperation and patience to try to, this is the way it was in 1995 when we were, when no one knew what a cell tower was. I was there, so I'm, I'm 20 years older, but I'm just as patient.
Mr. George, I'll, I'll just add, you know, I, I'm interested in seeing this move forward. My, my only hesitance at this point is, I guess, on two issues. One of saying arbitrarily, sure, I could pick a height level, but I'm, I'm certainly no expert and that's one area where I feel a little bit hesitant about of just arbitrarily saying 41 feet versus 55 feet, et cetera. And my second area is, you know, of hesitancy is, we vote yes today, what, what happens and what is that checklist of, of procedures that need to happen? You've talked, you've talked about other communities at this point that have those in place. I guess I want to be assured that when I vote yes, that I know the, the following will be signed off on, I know FAA is among them, but what, what are those, what are those areas in the city that we require locally? And I'd like to think that that doesn't take, you know, you know, two years for us to get done. I'd like to think that if there's already some work done and there's also a conversation happening on December 3rd, that'll help give us some guidance in the near future so that you're not waiting for years and you're instead, you know, hopefully getting some guidance from, at the state level in, in short order. So that, that's my area of hesitance. And that said, Counselors, the opportunity to speak. Thank you, sir. I'm gonna now invite a public comment from those in favor and those against. Is there anyone here wishing to speak in favor of the petition? Is there anyone here wishing to speak in opposition to the petition?
Move the hearing be closed?
Second.
Closed or resumed?
Excuse me, move the hearing be resumed?
Continued.
Continued until December?
Recessed, ex, until December 6th?
Six.
Is it second?
Second.
I have a motion and second to recess hearings on 214, 15, 55 and 56, 16 until the December 6th meeting. Speaking to the motion.
Just one point of information, on December 5th that evening, there's a Legislative Affairs Committee meeting dealing with the, the subject matter and if, hopefully maybe at that time the city solicitor can have some input for that meeting that night.
Sure. I have a motion and second to recess those hearings. Speaking to the motion, Counsel Boshman.
Thank you. I would also, I would also hope at that time that we have a list of conditions that we can actually put on these so that this gentleman can move forward. If we take a list of conditions and attach them to them, at least he can move forward knowing what the process that he needs to follow and he can finally get going on this because any of these, we can put any conditions that we want on them and it will give him access to at least start the process. At least he'll know what direction we need to go in. Thank you.
Speaking to the motion, Counsel Green.
Yeah, I'd like, I'd just like to know from Mr. George, is Salem the only one that has come up with a list of conditions or can you provide us with other municipalities that have set forth conditions for you?
Okay, that's a very good point. To my knowledge, Salem has been the only one that has adopted something. I know they're all working on something. What I would like to do is to place this into your record or give it to Attorney Pusitari. I find this to be well done, it was well crafted, if that means anything, so.
We'd be happy to accept.
This is the only thing that I have seen as adopted by, by, by counsel and mayor. They, they moved it forward. Everybody is sort of looking at it and this is sort of a template. There's another one out there on Cape Cod, on Cape Cod. The Cape Cod Commission did something similar and that's public record, I could forward that over to your group as well.
Thank you.
If, the Cape Cod Commission for the whole Barnstable County, Cape Cod, really did a nice job and laid it out. So there's two that I, that I use myself and try to pitch forward.
Thank you.
Is there anything else you need from me?
I have a motion and second on the floor to recess. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? We are recessed.
Thank you very much for your time. I'll place this with Attorney Pusitari. Thank you very much. Good to see you. Take care.
Next on the agenda, we have 250, 216, Harry DeLuca, Project Coordinator on behalf of Light Tower Fiber Networks to install fiber optic conduit at 275 Nichols Street, Main Street at School Street in Pittsburgh, Mass. There's no resistance from the petitioner, I'd also like to entertain 253, 16 at the same time.
Excellent.
And we have 253, 16, Harry DeLuca, Project Coordinator on behalf of Light Tower Fiber Optics to install fiber optic conduit at 275 Nichols Street, Main Street at Mechanic Street in Pittsburgh, Mass. I declare the hearing open. Ask the petitioner to be seated at the Senate table, identify yourself if you could, sir, and, and the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. My name is Brent Valerian, I am actually an engineer with Light Tower. This is actually my project to provide a new fiber optic service to UMass Memorial at 275 Nichols. Part of that requirement is a diverse entrance into the hospital to provide redundancy in case there is a, a fiber break on one of the paths. This connects to 60 Hospital Road in Lemonster and also back to the data center in Worcester. In order to do that, I need to break out of the existing Verizon underground structure on Main Street and dig two new conduits to the existing pole line, one on School Street and one on Mechanic Street to provide aerial fiber up to the hospital. We have received DPW approval from Commissioner Alasko and we just need a grant of location from, from the council.
I have a question from Counsel Green.
Um, this is probably gonna be a far out question, but I guess tonight's the night. Does your, with tearing up the street and accessing what's already there to lay new fiber optic down?
Mm-hmm.
What are the chances that that area of Main Street could pull Wi-Fi off of that, if any?
Well, this would be a, a Light Tower-owned fiber optic. If you were looking to do some type of Wi-Fi down the future, we could certainly have our sales group talk to the, to the town and we could provide you with an internet service to your IT department and they would probably administer it from there. We do offer dock fiber service, so we could potentially provide you a fiber link from, say, your head end, which would probably be Town Hall, to wherever the service you were trying to provide it and you would just kinda light it. That would probably be the best way to do it. This just kinda creates a, a new path. Fibrotech, who was originally the, the licenser on the, on the poles, was bought out by Light Tower two years ago. So the current assets are under Fibrotech. We have license agreements with Unitel and also Verizon, so. But yeah, if that's something you guys were interested in doing, it's certain, certainly something we could entertain. You know, I'm placing 144 fibers, so, you know, I'm, I'm sure we can certainly come up some type of agreement.
Thank you very much.
Sure.
Sir, can you, you said the DPW has signed off on this?
Yes.
There'll be no pedestrian obstruction from, from sidewalks or access to, to infrastructure in that area, is that correct?
I have the plans if, if anybody would wish to see them. It shows the existing underground infrastructure and also the sidewalks and where our plans are to dig if anybody wants to see them. I don't have copies for everybody, but I can certainly pass them around. We restore the road, road surface back to its original condition. DPW usually sets those limits as far as what the width of restoration would be. Sometimes it's four feet, sometimes it's eight feet, sometimes it's curb to curb. It depends on what DPW requires of us. We always have a DPW contractor on site with us when we're performing the work so they can kinda supervise and say, okay, don't do this or do that. We restore it back to that. If there's any sidewalk damage, we also restore that back to 100%. We just completed a major project in the city of Worcester. There was like a $10 million build for all the schools, so we had a lot of road restoration to complete. So yeah, we, we do it back to whatever you, you guys determine.
Thank you. Counsel Boshman.
I read your thing, you're gonna use a four-inch conduit pipe right in the ground?
Yes, sir.
Are you talking about those big fat wires on the top in front of 218 Mechanic Street?
Uh, I'm.
Started from the gas station coming across?
I'm gonna assume those are probably Verizon trunk lines. My, my cable is, is this thick. So you'll have the four-inch conduit come up through the ground?
Yeah.
Up probably about maybe a foot to the pole and then it stops right there. And then from there, we put a 10-foot visor guard, which is just kinda like a U-shaped channel to protect the fiber as it gets above, you know, people reaching it or damaging it or anything like that. So, but the cable itself i- is literally like the, like the size of a finger, it's not.
About what, a half inch, three-quarter inch stick?
Yeah, the cable itself, correct.
So may I ask you a question? Why are we using, not that I care, why are you using a four-inch conduit pipe?
A four-inch is actually industry standard. What we typically do in this situation is we put a four-inch conduit under the ground and then inside of that we'll run three one-inch inner ducts. So this way here, if in the future we needed another cable, we don't have to dig the road up again, we'll have, actually have two more conduits available to get up to that pole line.
No, this might be far off the cuff here.
Not at all.
I was up there with the counsel on my right and we looked at the pole, as a matter of fact, the pole you're gonna go to.
Okay.
And the wires are really sagging really bad.
Okay.
I mean, it looks like, in my opinion, it looks like hell. It was like you're in jail if you live in the house that's right behind the wires.
They're, they're big thick wires though?
Yeah, they're big, big, thick.
Yeah, so they're heavy, that's probably the old copper stuff from Verizon. It's probably a good 2,000 lines to go into that, so.
Yeah.
It's probably sagging.
Do you think it's all possible if you went right underground all the way up, right up to the hospital?
Uh, I know, I know you liked underground cables, I heard you earlier. It's definitely a possibility, the, the cost difference is probably a, at least a million dollars difference. And that would be a cost that we would have to pass on to the hospital. It's not something that we could absorb. It's something we could certainly look at, but it, it's not really a path that we would really choose to do. I've already started the aerial licensing portion from the utilities. You know, I, I know we're a little different than, than mobility, we're not, we're placing a cable up. Our cables are taut, the weight is not like those big thick cables that sag. That's something that Verizon could certainly look at and probably tighten up depending on the, the weight. Those poles are all rated to hold a certain amount of load or weight.
Yeah.
So we have certain confinements from Unitel and Verizon that we have to maintain. Our, our cables are actually further down River Street.
Yeah.
We come out, we come out of the underground.
Right.
After you cross the river.
Yeah.
And then we go down the road. So you could probably see our cables right there and, you know, I've been with the company for six years and I don't do work like that, you know, so.
Now let me ask you another question. Could we go from 218 to probably just not all the way up to the hospital, right up to Nichols Road? You know where Nichols Road is, the mechanic's bear's right and Nichols Road goes left?
Yeah.
And then stop right there?
So you're talking about staying underground all the way up on Mechanic Street?
Yeah.
Till, till it goes up to the hospital? It, it's definitely a potential. Again, the cost does get very expensive to dig. And with the impending moratorium, I'm assuming you have a moratorium in place in the wintertime for digging underground? Is that correct?
I can't answer, I, I don't know, sir.
I would assume the DPW has a moratorium, most, most municipalities do, usually starting at the end of November or right around Thanksgiving time up until March. This project is due by the end of the year. I'd have to redesign everything and then go back with sales and have them go to the customer saying that, you know, we need to dig and there's an additional million dollars to cost. So we're just trying to provide the, the hospital with, with a better service. So I can assure you though, it, it's not gonna look ugly and I'm not gonna put any boxes on anything or I'm just putting a line that's this thick right above your cable, cable TV provider and below power, so.
It's almost gonna look like Venetian blinds, all you need is a string and you, you can open them up and close them.
I know. Mine'll be the smallest one up there, I promise.
All right. I just thought I asked, I don't.
I understand, no, I understand, I wish I could, believe me. Yes, sir.
Hi. Mr. George, I, I share Counsel Boshman's affinity for underground conduits, but realize that in this case we already have existing above ground, so it's not like you're, you're creating new infrastructure above ground and new poles that weren't already there.
Correct.
So I understand that's a, an additional cost. You, you've already talked about the additional cost of a million. A curiosity, what is the, the total project cost for this, for this?
I honestly only have the 265 Nichols Street and the 60 Hospital Road. My rough guess, I won't know until everything is said and done, because once we start digging, sometimes we run into stuff that's, you don't know it's even there. If I had to guess, my cost for build and everything else is probably 600,000.
So you mentioned the, there's an underground, there's underground conduit from the Verizon box to the pole, and then runs up the pole? Is that correct in understanding?
Uh.
How far of an underground conduit are we talking about?
I can tell you right now that one of the digs from Verizon Street up to Pole 2 Mechanic is 244 feet, and on Main Street to School Street Pole 1, it is 261 feet. So about a total, and the two digs is 500 feet. The conduit penetrates right next to the pole, right against it. It only comes up about a foot. And then we put a 10-foot height U-guard, which is like a galvanized steel, just a protector, to protect that cable from somebody hitting it with an object or anything like that, so it doesn't damage the fiber.
Sure. I know we have some existing city code regarding underground conduits and its, its maintenance for city purposes and beyond. Mr. Solicitor, how does that, does it have any, any bearing on this?
So the city code does provide that, with every underground conduit, it's gonna be constructed after the passing of the code, of that particular provision, with to have an additional conduit laid for the city, city systems.
Okay.
It's to be not less than three inches, but it's to be a diameter that we would agree to.
So a four-inch?
I, I, I wouldn't be able to sit here and make an, I really don't know that much about conduit.
Okay.
But have, have you and Mr. Laxo talked about that at all? Or?
No, not to my knowledge, no.
Maybe I could direct you to speak to the IT department to make an agreement for, if you're going to.
I can certainly install a, a second four-inch conduit for the city to use. Just be aware that it would be within the Verizon underground structure. So it would be a second conduit that Light Tower would own, but would actually, you know, give it to you. But it would be into the Verizon structure.
So the code would then go on further and require that we would have the right to access that at reasonable times for maintenance purposes and so.
You could have it at any point in time you want. The only, only thing I would say is that when you start dealing with Verizon, they have certain stipulations that you have to agree to. For instance, usually you have to give them 48 hours' notice.
Mm-hmm.
And they have to arrange for a contract work inspector to be with you when you guys were to access those manholes. So, and you have to have proper safety gear and all that other stuff. But yeah, I, I have no problem putting a second conduit in for the city while I'm digging.
So Mr. Solicitor, we'd be, we'd be seeking an action contingent upon agreement on that conduit with our DPW commissioner and IT.
I would, yeah, and I would, yeah, I would like to just, just confer with IT, just to see what types of systems would be benefited from having that additional conduit.
Would, would a action with contingency be acceptable? Or do you feel that this requires additional legal paperwork?
You wanna, I think the gentleman's agreeable.
Okay.
I think we could have a, some contingency on that.
Absolutely.
I would just suggest that they would be full compliance with City Code's Chapter 89, Section 12, is the citation, sir.
Any further questions from counselors? All right, sir. Thank you. I'll now invite a comment for those to speak in, in favor of the petition. Anyone's wishing to speak in opposition to the petition? If all have been heard, I declare the hearing closed. Matters now before the council.
Thank you. Thank you, counsel.
Move the petition to be approved and include the provision for the second conduit for the city's use?
Second.
I have a motion and second to, to approve 252 and 253, 16, with contingency agreements by our DPW commissioner for the second conduit. Speaking to the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? This unanimous, 252 and 253, 16 pass.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Lastly, 254, 16, Fitchburg Gas and Electric Light Company, DBA, Unitel, to install River Street's one-pad transformer and associated conduit, and Kimball Place, two-pad mounted transformers and associated conduit, as outlined in the enclosed petition. Declare the hearing open.
Hi.
Hi.
Good evening. My name's Keith Carabo. I'm the manager of electric operations for Fitchburg Gas Electric, doing business with Unitel. I'm stationed out of our Fitchburg, John Fitch facility. The project that we have right now is a, a city initiative for the beautification of River Street, which is to relocate a roughly 1,500 feet of overhead wire to underground to get, to get a main conduit, okay? So hopefully, I'm on, on the right side here. It just, I heard a lot for the last couple of hours.
First.
We are Unitel, we're not National Grid.
1,501 feet.
Yeah, 1,501 feet.
That's, that's the limit.
Yeah, that's the limit. So what it is, is we have, there's roughly seven customers, Dunkin' Donuts, there's a couple other, LeBlanc's Auto, that need to be fed differently. So to do this, we need to install pad-mounted transformer equipment. There's two locations. One of them's off Kimball Place, roughly 170 feet up, behind the, behind the garage, right up on the roadway to the right-hand side, tight to the city property line. That'll allow us to feed two properties. The other one would be going, and the conduit from there would go from that spot, 150 feet, out to our existing manhole and duct system. We already have a duct system running down from Main Street all the way down to Wallace Road, so the, the electric part does not have to dig up any of that. Any work that you're seeing right now is to install, I believe it's cable TV, and Verizon has their duct work also. The other spot would be down by Dunkin' Donuts, where the ball field is, to bring a transformer in approximately 75 feet off the roadway, so we could feed to three different locations. We'd be feeding the ball field for the lighting, Dunkin' Donuts, and LeBlanc's Auto body. And we, after that, we'd be removing all of our utility poles along River Street as we cut over from, from overhead to underground. That's kind of the high level where we're at.
Questions from counselors? Counselor Boishman?
You made my day. And I was gonna make, put a smile on my face. The other day I was crying, today I'm smiling. Hey, the reason why I'm asking you is, when you take them, when you go underground, are you gonna take these poles right away, right off the ground, right out of the place? We're not gonna wait two years.
Um, I, Unitel will be off right away. As soon as we cut over, we'll be taking them off. There are, there is a fiber company there, a cable TV company, and then Verizon. Soon as we're done, we'll be notifying the next, and they have a rough estimated time to get their stuff off, to cut over. So yes, our plan is, my plan is to be, be done by next June. And the reason we're doing, saying that, because of the timeline. The construction company's gonna be shutting down shortly, and they'll have to take backup again. So it depends how far they move along, so to see if we can complete our, you know, we work right through the winter, so as soon as we can come off, you know, we're, we're coming off.
Okay. Very happy to.
Sir, just curious about the total project cost for, for the entire underground conduit.
Sure. Unitel's, Unitel's cost is about $262,000 to perform this work.
Okay. Thank you. And same, same question about the conduits in compliance with city code. I imagine, I, I'm hoping you've had a conversation or have heard of this with, with Lenny Laxo and conduit access.
I need to follow up with, with Lenny on this. I know they're installing conduit right now for the communication. I don't know if they're installing an additional conduit right there, right now. I do have that as a takeaway. Our, all of our conduits run from electrical power holes with 13,000 volts in each one. So typically, the people that are located within our, our system is, is electric.
Are you amenable to, to that condition of the, the code, and willing to conduct that conversation with the commissioner?
I'd like to have the conversation with the commissioner, and also with, with, with our council on that. I just, we've, we have not had that in the past. I'm, I'm not against it. I'm just, we have very specialized workers who work, work in, in our systems.
So, sir, would you be seeking for this to be recessed until the next meeting, or for this to be, for action to be taken contingent upon, upon that, that follow-up?
Yeah, I, I, I believe the city would also prefer that, because they're, they're trying to get that conduit in the ground, and any delay on this could, could push it until, until next year. So I'd absolutely be willing to take that back and have a talk with, with the DPW, and to find out, you know, what, so additional conduit would be us running from our spot on the transformer pad to our existing manhole. So if there would be an additional conduit, it'd be from that spot to that spot. The stuff that's running already down the road is pre-existing, so I don't know what that would, would gain the city, but I'm absolutely, I'd be happy to discuss to see if that, that makes sense.
Excellent. Any further questions from counselors?
Will the hearing be closed?
We just need to, is there anyone here wishing to speak in favor of the petition? Is there anyone here wishing to speak in opposition to the petition? If all have been heard, I declare the hearing closed. Matters now before you.
Motion to approve 254, 16. Second.
I have a motion and second to approve 254, 16. Speaking to the motion, Counselor Green.
I just want to make sure that, that that, that there's a condition with the follow-up with Mr. Alasko.
Absolutely. Yeah, I, I will talk to, I'll talk to Commissioner Alasko tomorrow about that, and find out if there's any. If not, I can, I can install a, a four-inch conduit. I just have to talk to the, to the contractors who perform in the work for, for the city, but I don't see that as an issue, running it from our transformer pad to our existing manholes.
A motion and second to approve 254, 16, in compliance with Chapter 89, Section 12 City Code. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? This unanimous?
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Orders, finance.
268, 16, 272, 16 be sent to finance. Second.
Motion and second to send 268, 16 up to and including 272, 16 be sent to finance. All those in favor?